Good evening. Thank you for coming out tonight. Welcome to the February 12th, 2024, meeting of the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery Township. We're going to get started with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. First up would be public comment. Any person wishing to make public comment during this meeting on any items not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. No public comment. Next thing is item number four, which is our consent agenda. I'm going to move that we approve the consent agenda as presented for the following. Minutes of the January 22nd, 2024 board meeting, payment of bills for February 12th, 2024, escrow release number four for the higher rock residential development, and escrow release number eight and start of maintenance for Firefox Phase Two Northern Village. Is there any public comment? All in favor? Aye. All right. Number five, request authorization to purchase a speed trailer. Chief bending, chief of police.
Yes, good evening. The police department is proposing purchasing a second speed trailer, message sign trailer. Last year, we purchased a similar model to replace our 2005 trailer. The unit found that the unit that we purchased last year was very effective in mitigating some of the speeding concerns raised by our residents. We'd like to purchase a second unit. This would allow us the placement of units at locations for more extended periods, thus further easing some of the residents' concerns about speeding in the township. In addition to providing alerts to speeding vehicles, the unit can also be utilized to gather speed data and serve as a temporary message board. Attached to the board packet is a quote dated from January 24th of this year from All Traffic Solutions, an authorized vendor under the CoStars program to provide the requested unit at a total cost of $18,425.13. A total of $18,500 was included in the 2024 approved final budget under Police Department capital purchase this speed trailer. It is recommended the board authorize the purchase of this unit.
Anybody have any questions?
Is this the first time we'll have two of these units?
Correct, ma'am.
I was noticing on the spec sheet that there was like a strobe feature for a violation as you go by. Is that something that we, was that a feature that we were looking for?
It's, I would say a strobe, it's more or less, it's, it's not a strobe in the sense of a strobe, it's an LED flashing LED type unit, yeah. So it's, it's something that draws attention to it. The old unit didn't have anything of that nature. This one's like the red and blue light.
It's very effective because if you go by and you catch it in your rearview mirror, your sideview mirror, you will see, it almost gives you the impression that you're being pulled over. So if the goal is to get someone to pump the brake, then.
Yeah, I was excited to see that. And I was, I was wondering whether or not that was part of the process to deter, you know, the speeding.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're very effective. Again, they've, they've been really popular in the township. This unit's got so many more features compared to the old unit that we had, so.
Yeah, I was, I thought that was a great feature to add.
All right, sounds good. I'm going to move toward the contract for the purchase of a Speed Alert 24 radar message sign trailer from All Traffic Solutions, an authorized vendor under the CoStars Cooperative Purchase Program, at a total cost of $18,425.13 per their quote. Any public comment? All in favor? Aye. Number six is replacement generator for Battalion One Firehouse. Chief Wegman?
Good evening. This is in follow-up to our last month's change order for the Battalion Two generator that was in last year's budget. This year in capital expenditures, we have the replacement generator for our Battalion One Firehouse. The existing generator there has reached the end of its life cycle and does not provide all the essential functions of the firehouse. So right now, the generator only provides for emergency functions, which basically is opening the doors and some electrical outlets. We had Culp, we had West Generator, sorry, from Culp still come out to do an assessment of the battalion and the needs to have the building completely wired for emergency power. West Generator currently services both the firehouse's generators. West provided the township with a quote for $99,774 for the purchase and installation of the new generator at Battalion One. We did budget $100,000 in the 2024 capital investment plan for the replacement of the generator at Battalion One. West Generator Service is an approved CoStar vendor. Staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors approve the purchase of a new generator for the Battalion One Firehouse to replace our existing generator.
How old is the existing one, do we know?
Yes, it is a 2008. So, and it's, it's really undersized for the, for the firehouse now. We've put, had to make a lot of, I'll call it manipulations to the generator over the last three years to make it work. So, yeah, we, we, we really need for the, for the way that building functions, a more powerful generator is needed.
Anybody have any questions? When will you get it?
Good question.
Sorry.
Nine to 12 months, fingers crossed.
Unbelievable.
But guaranteed at that price?
Guaranteed locked in at the price, unless, you know, the change order for Battalion Two was because they just ran out of that model. So we're hoping that we, we were signed at that price for this generator.
All right, well, here's to hoping. Move to approve the purchase and installation of a replacement generator for the Battalion One Firehouse from West Generator Service and approved CoStars vendor for $99,774. Any public comment? All in favor? Aye. Pennsylvania Office of the State Fire Commissioner Grant Awards. Again, Chief Wegman?
Yes, both the Department of Fire Services and the FDMT applied for the 2023-2024 PA Office of State Fire Commissioner Grant Awards, and both agencies were awarded $16,951.99 for the grant. The DFS will use the money to purchase some more road rescue equipment, which will complete the upgrades that started two years ago. And the FDMT will use the grant money to purchase new turnout gear for volunteer firefighters. The grant will obviously have a positive impact. Staff recommends that the board approve the PA Office of State Fire Commissioner Grant Awards for both the DFS and the FDMT.
Can you use that money for whatever you want?
Sort of. There's five categories. We typically only apply for equipment. It could be renovations to the building. It could be staff overtime costs for training. But typically, we know that we're going to get awarded this, so we build it into both budgets for equipment purchases. This was the first year that they, that the max allowable application was for $20,000 per agency. I thought we were going to get the $20,000, but I guess they didn't have enough, and that's why we both got the same amount, because it's really depending on how many people apply. But in the news recently, the governor has promised to double that funding. He's been going around touring fire departments, so if that's the case, next year we may be able to apply for $80,000 through both agencies, which would be awesome, so.
That's great. Okay. I'm going to move to approve the PA Office of State Fire Commissioner Grant Awards of $16,951.99, each for the Department of Fire Services and the Fire Department of Montgomery Township. Any public comment? Nope. All in favor? Aye. Great. And then also Chief Wegman, the fundraising efforts for 2024.
Yes, in accordance with the fire service agreements that the township has with the FDMT, the FDMT has to have their budgeted fundraising, I'm sorry, their, their planned fundraising approved by the board. This year, they're looking at the residential mailer, the business mailer, car washes, and dine and donate events. The township also budgeted $10,000 for the FDMT fundraising activities, so there will be no additional impact on the township's budget. There would obviously be a positive impact on the FDMT budget for the money collected. Staff recommends that the board approve the 2024 planned fundraising activities for the FDMT.
I feel like I saw that in the mailboxes today.
Yes, yeah. The residential mailer brings the FDMT about $70,000 a year. So that's the big one. The business mailer does about $12,000. Last year, the FDMT met with a financial advisor to invest the money that they had in their savings account to start a low-sop program, which is really like a pension program for active volunteers. So if they do 20 years of activity, then they can apply for this pension program. So they're, they're trying to be good stewards of the money instead of just having it sit around not earning any interest or anything like that.
Nice. Okay, I'm going to move to approve the 2024 planned fundraising activities of the FDMT. Any public comment? All in favor? Aye. Great. Moving to Public Works section, item number nine, authorization to bid concrete curb and handicap ramp replacement for the 2024 paving projects. Greg Reeve?
Good evening. Included in the 2024 capital investment plan is concrete curb and handicap replacement for the 2024 paving project. Competitive bids will be solicited utilizing PennBid's website. A total of $286,560 has been included in the 2024 capital investment plan for the replacement of curbing and handicap ramps. So it would be our recommendation, the Board of Supervisors approve the authorization for the advertisement of the bid.
Anybody have any questions?
I was just curious to know, is this like township-wide, because there's no designated areas attached?
There's not. Generally, it goes to wherever, whatever roads we're going to be doing our paving projects on. If we have some other areas that need to be addressed, we do address them at that time. So some of the areas that we have for this year coming up are areas that are outside of the scope of work for the paving.
And those streets, those are all listed in the budget, correct?
Correct. Yeah, they're, they're listed on the next, on the best for the in-place paving. All the roads are listed there.
Okay. All right. I'm going to move to authorize the advertisement of the concrete curb and handicap ramp replacement for the 2024 paving project utilizing PennBid. Any public comment? All in favor? Aye. Great. Greg, you've got the next one for the in-place bid for paving.
Okay. Included in the capital investment plan are roads which are scheduled to be milled and paved as part of the township's road improvement plan, which is attached. Competitive bids will be solicited utilizing PennBid. The 2024 budget includes $858,100 in the state liquid fuels fund for this project. So again, it would be our recommendation to the Board of Supervisors to approve the authorization for the advertisement of the bid.
Anybody have any questions? I'm going to move to authorize the advertisement of the 2024 in-place paving bid utilizing PennBid. Any public comment? All in favor? Aye. All right. Authorization to bid the mill and overlay of the FDMT Battalion One parking lot. Greg Reeve?
Okay, included in the capital investment plan is the mill and overlay of the FDMT Battalion One parking lot. Competitive bids will be solicited using PennBid. A total of $125,000 has been included in the 2024 capital investment plan for the mill and overlay of Battalion One. It is recommended the Board of Supervisors approve the authorization for the advertisement of the bid.
Questions? I'm going to move to authorize the bid advertisement for the mill and overlay of the, of the FDMT Battalion One parking lot utilizing PennBid. Any public comment? All in favor? Aye. All right. Next is 12, authorization to bid storm sewer infrastructure improvements on Bedford Lane. Greg Reeve?
Included in the 2024 capital investment plan are improvements to various storm sewer infrastructures throughout the township. After site visits, it's recommendation of Gilmore and Associates, our engineer, that the work be completed at the township-owned basin on Bedford Lane in compliance with the MS4 stormwater compliance. Competitive bids will be utilized on the PennBid website. A total of $60,000 has been included in the 2024 capital investment plan for this stormwater improvement project, Bedford Lane. It would be our recommendation at this time, the Board of Supervisors approve the authorization for the advertisement of the bid.
Okay. I'm going to move to authorize the advertisement of the bid for storm sewer infrastructure, infrastructure improvements at the basin on Bedford Lane utilizing PennBid. Any public comment? All in favor? Aye. All right. Authorization to bid lawn and field care treatment. Greg Reeve?
Included in the 2024 budget is lawn and field care treatment, which would include pre and post emergent broadleaf weed control and liquid fertilizer to be applied at all fields in the township-owned parks and the administration and CRC buildings. Competitive bids will be solicited using PennBid. The project was included in the 2024 budget for lawn and field care. It's, it is our recommendation at this time, the Board of Supervisors approve the authorization for the advertisement of this bid.
Anybody have any questions? I'm going to move to authorize the advertisement of the bid for 2024 lawn and field care treatment utilizing PennBid. Any public comment? All in favor? Aye. All right, we still have another one now on the replacement of the street sweeper. Did you hear that whoever was driving the sweep, the street sweeper last week by the bus stop was a hero? Down, going down Claremont Lane someday last week, the kids at the bus stop wanted their autograph.
Yes, Carolyn passed that along, and we, we passed that along to Josh who was driving the truck, so he ate that up. He was really, really kind of happy about it, so it was good to hear.
It's my nephew's bus stop, so this is what I hear. My sister called me and said, oh, the street sweeper went by. You'd think it was a celebrity. There were, there's just two little boys at the bus, and they were just clamoring, hoping it would stop. Of course, it's not going to stop, but.
Well, it's a street Zamboni.
But for them to say, could we get his autograph? Maybe you could get me two autographs and I'll deliver them. Does he, do they have like a rookie card?
We'll have to look into that. Public Works trading cards.
They made some boys very happy that day. Absolutely. So I'm sorry. Tell us about why we need a new one.
All right, are we, are we ready here? In 2024, the Public Works Department is scheduled to replace a 2012 Elgin Whirlwind Street Sweeper. It is proposing to purchase one Elgin Whirlwind MV Street Sweeper from Grand Turk Equipment, and it's approved in the 2024 capital investment plan. Attached is a quote dated January 22nd of 2024 from Grand Turk, an authorized vendor under the CoStars Cooperative Purchasing Program. Street Sweeper is a total cost of $405,934.75. A total of $400,000 was included in the 2024 capital investment plan for the purchase of the Whirlwind Street Sweeper. So it would be our recommendation that the Board of Supervisors approve the awarding of the contract for the reference purchase per the 2024 capital investment plan.
So when we get the new one, will we have two?
No, we will send that one to MUNESI Bid.
We'll sell that, just so I can let the fans know?
Two would be good. I mean, it's been going out a lot more. The weather's been cooperating this year. We've really, it's been out as much as we can possibly have it out, so it's been going out quite a bit.
Do we know what delivery time on this one is?
I heard, I'm going to say no, but we did hear through the grapevine, it would be anywhere from 15 to 18 months. He said possibly a little bit sooner, but it depends on if other people cancel their orders. I'm going to say we're as locked in as we can be. They're not really guaranteeing anything. He told us if we got the quote in, they would try to honor the price. But we're seeing that across the board. They're, they're just, they're not honoring the prices.
Right, there's disclaimer on the invoice.
Yeah.
Yep. They're, they're going to have to pass on those calls.
So I think it also depends on how fast they can secure the chassis of the truck. If they can secure the chassis and they don't receive any more price increases on that, I think that pretty well locks us in.
All right. I'm going to move to award the contract for the purchase of one Elgin Whirlwind MV Street Sweeper from Grand Turk Equipment Company, Inc., an authorized vendor under the CoStars Cooperative Purchase Program at a total cost of $405,300, $405,934.75 per their quote dated January 22nd, 2024. Any public comment? All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Oh, no problem. Going into Administration and Finance, number 15, approval of the Wissahickin Stormwater Consortium. Carolyn McCreary, Township Manager.
Thank you. Good evening. At your January meeting, I discussed the fact that both EPA and DEP have reviewed the QIP, and they have provided comments back, and we are now in a position where we want to be able to apply for grants to look at projects and quantify the square yards that we're going to involve with them, as well as the prioritizing of them. So it was recommended after speaking with our solicitor, who was kind enough to get on the call with everybody and explain our options, including an authority, including a council of governments, including a joint venture, that a consortium made the most sense. Most of the municipalities are familiar with both the Montgomery County Consortium, as well as the other three, other three counties that surround Philadelphia. At this point in time, a resolution was done by the management committee, along with our consultants, and is being shared with all of the municipalities, as well as waste water treatment plants for adoption, so that we were just unified with what we were approving, and then we're going to move forward and start working on our RFPs for professionals, including a solicitor for the consortium as well. So tonight, I'm asking the board to adopt the resolution that has been prepared, which would convert us into a consortium as soon as we get approval from the regulatory agencies that our plan has been approved to make improvements that are necessary to the impaired health of aquatic life in the Wissahickin.
So this will be similar to the consortium or the recycling consortium that we have in Northern Montgomery?
Yes. The only difference is that these are already established, this, this, because we are all in this watershed. And this is the first time. There are some other watersheds that are smaller. They have smaller groups. There's a skipback group, which I believe is five or six. This one is big, and they have, you know, historically worked together to get us this far. Now we just need to get over the next hurdle and be prepared so that when they pull the trigger and say this is a go, that we are not then being accused of waiting and wasting time, and we're in a position to be able to start moving forward, figuring out how we're going to adopt the budget, and also how we're going to get our funding together.
That's great.
It's come a long way. I think when I was first on the board, Mike Fox was part of a stormwater consortium way back then, when they just kind of started to say, here's what's coming down the pipe. And it's a good thing to share the cost and the resources.
It absolutely is. And it's also important that everybody recognizes that it's one watershed, and stormwater does not know municipal boundaries. So this is the first time I think that everybody is on there, and they understand that there might be a project that's identified in Lower Gwinnett or Springfield Township, but it's for the good of the watershed. You know, our watershed starts at the headwaters up by Wegmans, so we're, that's why we're involved. Landstill has their waste water treatment plant, you know, actively involved in this. The challenge that we're facing right now, that was as people have retired, as some elected officials have either chosen not to run again or have not been reelected, there is a new group that has to be brought up to speed with everything. We currently only have one chair where we've always had co-chairs, so we're begging, but right now, it's me.
Well, it's a great idea, so I'm happy for us to participate in that.
I'm going to move to adopt resolution number 2024-04 to form a municipal consortium to further carry out the projects identified in the Wissahickin Clean Water Partnership Plan. Any public comment? All in favor? Aye. Thank you again for spearheading that. Recognition of Government Communicators Day, February 24th, 2024. Derek Muller, Public Information Coordinator.
So Government Communicators Day is a new day, which is on February 24th, 2024. Recognized, started by the City to County Communications and Marketing Association, or 3CMA, and California Association of Public Information Officials, or CAPIO, a day dedicated to recognizing and celebrating contributions of public communicators nationwide to provide transparent, timely, and relevant information to their communities. As government communicators, we're often behind the scenes, kind of where we like it, to make our municipalities and coworkers look good. So these organizations decided there should be one day to recognize the efforts of government communicators. And we send that recognition to all staff in our departments who help us on our various communication channels and social media. If you want some proof that people in this line of work aren't too comfortable with pencils on the back like this, they made it the 24th, which is on a Saturday. So I would appreciate if you could recognize this new day on the 24th, Government Communicators Day.
That's great. Happy to recognize the communicators in our world.
Important stuff. Thank you, Jack.
Even on a Saturday.
I'm going to move to recognize Government Communicators Day on February 24th, 2024. Any public comment? All in favor? Aye.
Thank you for all that you do.
Just as an FYI, your next meeting, Derek, is going to be the one providing the department report and updating you on all of our citizen engagement initiatives, our website upgrade, et cetera.
Great.
So we get to recognize and us to do work, right?
Yes, absolutely.
The website's awesome, by the way. Thank you for all that. That was a huge project.
Switching that over. Last thing on our agenda is number 17, grant application to the Monco 2040 Program for Stump Road Pedestrian Improvements. Carolyn McCreary, Township Manager.
Thank you. Part of the board's walkability initiative includes staff identifying areas where connectivity is missing and is desired. We came to you first talking about the two parks, which now have their rapid flashing beacons installed, and they're very well illuminated. In fact, the one night when we had a lot of fog, one of the Public Works employees actually told me that he never saw anything like it, where it didn't bleed out and get lost in the fog. It actually stayed illuminated down in a triangle, so it is very safe for people to go at night, as well as during the day. And I've been on those roads, and I've watched motorists see them, and then somebody's crossing, and they're slowing down as they advance, and then stopping to allow the pedestrian to get to the refuge island, and then ultimately the other side. So we've also identified. the other side. So we've also identified last year stump road, especially with the village coming forward and wanting to do an adaptive reuse. We thought it was prudent to look at that area and possibly install a sidewalk that would lead safely to the rec center, along with another installation of a rapid flashing beacon. We made a couple grant applications, one to DCED, which we did not hear back from yet. The other one we made was to the Montgomery County Pedestrian and Transportation Program. We did not get that grant. However, there is another grant round going forward, is the Monco 2040 program, and we want to submit an application to that and see how we fare in that program. I've shared it with the Highway Safety Unit. I've also shared it with Gilmore and Associates, our traffic engineers. Both agree that this is a possibility, that this sort of marries better than the transportation program one did. So we want to get a resolution adopted this evening, so we can submit it with the grant, and that would have a one hundred thousand dollar match from our capital reserves. The estimate of the project is a little over three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars.
That'd be a nice grant.
Hope so.
It would. Any questions? I'm going to move to adopt resolution number 2024-05, supporting the grant application to the Montgomery County Monco 2024 program for the installation of sidewalk and rectangular rapid flashing beacons and pedestrian improvements along stump road. Second. Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
That is all we have. Is there any old business that we need to talk about? Anybody have any new business to talk about? Okay, then. I'm going to move that we adjourn. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night. Thanks for coming out.